Good morning, everyone. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse in the City of Gaston YouTube. Before we get started, I'd like to officially welcome the youth in government students from Gaston City High School who are spending the day at the city and observing the council meetings and shadowing various city directors and officials. We welcome you today to our council meeting. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Oliver Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Councilman Cannon and Councilman Reed are absent today. We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask one of our youth in government students, Emma Pace, to come to the podium over here and to lead our invocation today. So everyone, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, thank you for today. Thank you for allowing us to be here. Thank you for all the knowledge that you've given us today. Thank you for your grace and thank you for your protection. I ask that you continue to uplift us and protect our minds. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Work Committee work session and the city council meeting that was held April the 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of April the 15th through the 21st.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Today, we have a special presentation and we'll ask Captain Bobby Jackson to come forward, please.
Thank you, President Toles, Counselor. Ally, will you and Noel please step up here? When I talk about the Gaston Police Department, you know, I always say you have a police department you can be proud of. I don't mean you have an okay police department. I don't mean you have a pretty good police department. I mean, you got an outstanding police department. I'm here to recognize a couple of your police officers today. This letter is to commend the actions and bravery of Officers Alec Burgess and Noel Boyd in the line of duty. The circumstances are as follows. On April 16, 2022, Officers Alec Burgess and Noel Boyd were on duty working patrol. At approximately 5:17 PM, they responded to the Memorial Bridge in Gaston in reference to a report of a suicidal female. Upon their arrival, they found the woman preparing to jump from the bridge. Excuse me. They attempted to talk to her, but she immediately jumped into the Coussa River below. They reported the location of the woman went into the water while running back to their patrol vehicle. They urgently drove to Coussa Landing where they enlisted a citizen who had just pulled his boat from the river to help. Standing in water, they disconnected the boat from its trailer and jumped inside. Without hesitation and regard for their own personal safety, Officers Alec Burgess and Noel Boyd removed heavy duty gear in the event they had to jump into the river while giving directions in an attempt to find the young woman. Due to their dedication and willingness to preserve life, Officers Alec Burgess and Noel Boyd did go above and beyond their duties, putting their own lives at risk in a dangerous situation to save an individual that was unknown to them. Their actions are to be commended and their bravery in the line of duty is to be recognized. Officers Alec Burgess and Noel Boyd are an asset to the Gaston Police Department and citizens of Gaston. Thank you, fellas, for everything. We appreciate you.
Yeah, but you get them. They're pretty. I'm not.
One, two. One, two.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, President Toles.
Thank you, Captain Jackson, and thank you to the two officers that did risk their lives. I know a lot can be said and my part is, I remember when Captain, when Chief Reed had told us about the situation and what really disturbed me more than anything and he asked for our prayers was that the body was recovered, but it could have been a situation where if the body had been lodged under logs or if the body had been logged under a boat, then the body would have never come up. And you think about it, every time we crossed that bridge, we would be wondering and we would be thinking, where is this young lady? Where is this young lady? So I commend the policemen who were there. I commend the fire department and all the things that they have done because not only did it help to bring closure to the family, but it also helped to bring closure to the city. And so for that, we are grateful, we are thankful, and we definitely thank the police department, the fire department, and all the responders. You know, this is why I say Facebook may be a good thing, but you can't listen to all that stuff that's on Facebook because sometime they don't tell the truth. And as I was saying to, and now I'm gonna call out my little former student, Malachi. He's the police chief today. So not bad to be a police officer today, is it? So I want to again, thank you all and thank the police department for all that you've done. We will continue our agenda today. Unfinished business, the first item, there's no action that will be necessary regarding the resolution on 111 Stillman Avenue because it's in District 2 because it's already been abated by the owner. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 303 Davis Street in District 1, State of Alabama, possible right of redemptions of Gertie Walker being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
My President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Builder Department. We filed this case in March of 2021. It involves an accessory building. The house that was on this property was removed by the owner several years past but left the accessory building which became in disrepair as you can see in the recent pictures. There've been no improvements of this case. There are no permits to improve and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
The pleasure of the council, I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a final public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1901 Nakalula Road in District 7. This is Dennis Wayne Bailey, subject to a mortgage in favor of Mortgage and Information Services being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? What is the pleasure of the council?
We need to hear from Brian.
Oh, I'm sorry. If they saw the pictures, they would have known why it went so fast.
My President, this was an abandoned house and still is. We have filed the case over a year ago. We have yet to have any interest from the current owner to do anything and obviously no one's here today to represent him. Been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. We're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
All right.
Question. Is this the one next to the shelves marked up there on the?
We'll look at it. The initial assessment was not good, but we'll look at it.
Okay.
What is the pleasure of the council?
No to abate.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have a resolution authorizing amendment to the agreement with the Gaston Airport. This authorize an amendment to the outside agency agreement with the airport authority for a one-time payment of $400,000 to be used for legal services due to ongoing litigation. At this time, I call on Attorney Lee Roberts.
Thank you, Councilwoman President. I thought it'd be appropriate to kind of give this resolution some context since there's been some concern about it in the public. I would like to first remind the council that this lawsuit was not brought by either the city or the airport authority. Both the entities were sued. We had no input on whether to be invited to this party. We were sued. Our response from the beginning of this lawsuit has been that the court should not intervene at least until after legislative bodies have acted. It is a defense based on fundamental constitutional principles regarding the separation of powers between our respective branches of government. The resolution we have for consideration today is needed to defend a lawsuit which seeks to alter the separation of powers doctrine. Let me explain. As I previously stated to this council in public meetings, this council, one way or the other, would have to vote to allow a rendering plant to locate out by the airport. Many people in our community who oppose the idea of a rendering plant had strong suspicions over how this council and the airport authority might vote. Therefore, they filed a lawsuit to stop any legislative consideration of a rendering plant. The city and the airport authority have maintained in our defense of the lawsuit that the court lacks constitutional jurisdiction to interject itself into the legislative process, at least until after the council and the airport authority have acted. In simple terms, had this council voted no for no rendering plant, there'd be no need for a lawsuit. Had this council voted yes with conditions, conditions like if it smells, we're cutting your water off. If truck traffic is spillage, it happens, we're cutting your water off. If we see you're polluting our waters, we cut your water off. That could have been a legislative process this body was never allowed to consider. But now that the airport authority and the council have voted not to sell or lease its property for a rendering plant, we have asked the judge to dismiss the lawsuit because there's no longer a reason to explore the limits of judicial power. The plaintiffs' fears over how this council and the airport authority might vote have been alleviated. And so now the case, the issue, is moot. In response to, can you pull this up for me, please? It's a plaintiff's response to our motion for summary judgment. In response to our motion for summary judgment, which is a request that the court dismisses the case, the Knowles Law Firm, and they signed this pleading, states, and this was filed on March 14, you know, 2022, and they say furthermore, this case hinges not only on the fact that there is not presently a rendering plant located at the Gaston Airport, but on whether there will be in the future, whether at the airport or elsewhere in the city, and get this, or county. This is the crux of the plaintiff and intervener's anticipatory nuisance claim. A countywide mandate for no rendering is not in their complaint. They changed the goalpost. And this is what they've asked the court. This is their pleading. I didn't write this. They did. And how can you accomplish a mandate over private property owners who are not even involved in this case? They have anticipatory property rights, which if there is a countywide decree that would be violated, these private landowners who are not a part of the case would have no opportunity to speak in their defense. This is a usurpation of private individuals who are not a part of this case, assumption of their due process rights. So how in the world could that be accomplished? Can I go to the next slide here, the Gaston Times article of February 22? And this is why in the newspaper, and I was accused publicly of, I was accused in the paper in print, of intentionally misleading the public because they say that the plaintiffs are not seeking a consent decree. This is an article that appeared on February 22. I did not write the article. It says, "The plaintiff's dynamic collision and a group of neighboring property owners say those actions don't go far enough, that the rejection of this proposal does not mean the citizens of Etowah County," not the city, "Etowah County, are safe from a future proposal." And this is a quote. Quote, "The judge's order gave a clear roadmap to resolving the issue, comma, end of quote. Plaintiff's attorney, Kristi Knowles, said, comma, 'By consent decree.'" I didn't say that. That's what the plaintiff's attorney said. And I have been in disagreement with a consent decree, as I have previously explained to the council, because it binds the hands of future councils. And this, and it sets a precedent. And sometimes when you set a precedent over something that you agree with, you think it's fine. But once that precedent is set, there's going to be untoward consequences. So you've got to be very careful when setting a precedent on binding future councils' hands. But unfortunately, the judge has not yet made a decision and the trial date was set next week. And although, and the plaintiff's lawyers filed a motion to continue the trial date. We opposed it and the airport authority opposed it because we wanted to go ahead and have the trial to end these legal expenses. But the plaintiffs chose to continue the case. They filed a motion with the court asking that the case be continued. And the court last night granted the continuance until July of this year. So the legal expenses will continue, unfortunately. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
We've been talking about the legal costs for the airport authority. What's the legal cost on the city side of this lawsuit?
Well, as you know, there are two different cases in which we're involved in. One is called the public records case and one is called the zoning case. And we had insurance from AMIC, which also the airport authority did as well. And on each case, there was a $10,000 limit on attorney's fees. So there was $10,000 worth of coverage. Unfortunately, on the open records case, the plaintiffs, instead of suing the city, they chose to name me as a defendant. So I could not participate in that case. However, in the zoning case, I was able to participate and I sheltered some of the responsibility. But our outside counsel of Ford, Howard, and Knut, their bill, to my recollection, is about a 10th or 15%, about 10% or 15% of what's been appropriated here today.
What happens if we vote no and not give the airport authority the money?
Well, attorney's fees are incurred, you know, the service is rendered. And so the airport has, through their chairman, Mr. Billingley, has requested this after conversations with their lawyer. They don't have the money readily available to pay outstanding bills at this time. And so if that were the case, then I would, I can't speak what would happen, but ultimately the airport authority, one way or the other, will have to pay those bills.
Let's go to this consent decree. In this consent decree, what are, okay, what is it asking us? They're wanting the city council to do a consent decree. Am I correct?
Well, yes. I mean, that's.
A consent decree that would say that never any rendering plants or anything could come to the City of Gaston. Is that what they're asking?
Yeah, countywide.
So if we never do this, then we will have a legal case till eternity. Am I right?
If we don't agree to a consent decree, and let me be fair, these are the terms that the plaintiff's lawyer has used, okay? Consent decree. And if you look back at the judge's order, he realized that some of what they're asking for cannot be accomplished by the court absent an agreement to enter into a consent decree. Given the negative impact that in the public, the talk about consent decrees have had in discussions which are really confidential at this point, the term consent decree has not been used. But in order to enforce what wants to be enforced, it can only be done through consent decree, is the legal opinion of not only myself, outside counsel, and counsel for the airport authority and other Birmingham council in the case who've looked at this.
And we don't have jurisdiction over the county.
No, sir, we don't.
So we could not do that anyway?
Absolutely. But I mean, it's in their pleadings that they filed with the court in last month, and it's also in this newspaper article the month before where it says, you know, the Etowah County, not the citizens of Gaston, it's Etowah County. And like I said, this boils down to a fundamental principle. I mean, the Constitution is very clear, it gives limited powers to each branch of government. And this is a lawsuit designed to test the boundaries of those powers. And, you know, like I said, when it's something you can agree to, it's like if we wanted to put up a bright shining cross outside on the front lawn of the City Hall, we can do that. But we've now made the space a public space and we've set a precedent for something untoward that can come down the road when someone wants to put up something that we don't agree with. So it's very, so the defense of this case is not a defense of Pilgrim's Pride because they were not even named in the original lawsuit. Pilgrim's Pride chose to intervene into this lawsuit later. So it's never been about Pilgrim's, it's been about a fundamental constitutional principle that of separations of power to state and our desire not to set a precedent.
So Lee, just to be clear about, so at this point, there's a lot being said relative to a narrative that says that the city council could have avoided the legal fees and expenses. But at this point, and I guess I need you to confirm my understanding, no water permit was granted? Is that accurate?
Correct.
So no water permit, no rendering plant. That happens without litigation?
Correct.
No FAA permit for a rendering plant usage, correct?
Correct.
So no FAA permit, no rendering plant, happens without litigation? No agreement to sell on the part of the airport authority, correct?
Correct.
Okay. No agreement to sell, no rendering plant. That happens without litigation?
Correct.
So those things were not allowed to follow their process? And as, you know, as I recall, this council never had the opportunity to take action, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, just wanted to make sure I was not missing anything relative to those four points.
Well, if you'll recall, before the lawsuits were filed, I stood right here and explained the process for the public. And I said that the due diligence phase is not complete. And I explained all the different items that have to be completed before this council would have an opportunity to vote. And those items have never been completed. And as our US Congressman said in his press release, that in his conversation with the FAA, they will never allow a rendering plant to locate out by our airport. And that was done. And US Congressman Adirhut was not part of any sort of litigation. That was done by constituents reaching out to him. So this matter never had to be litigated. But since it is and since it's trying to force this council to set a precedent, which I think is unconstitutional, here we are today.
Lee, a couple of questions, and I find myself having to explain this more often than I ever thought I would. I am not a lawyer. I'm not a litigator. So I'm gonna ask questions to try to get clarification on a few things that are kind of in the weeds, but, and they're pointed questions. Number one, when is the last time anybody from this city or Gaston Airport Authority has communicated with Pilgrim's Pride or any representative of Pilgrim's Pride? Do you know?
Well, I did see their lawyer when we went to the hearing.
I mean, within the context of the?
Zero. Zero.
I mean, since the Gaston Airport Authority's decision not to sell the property, was that, in your opinion, the definitive, that's when Pilgrim's Pride, quote unquote, walked away?
Yes. They pulled their ATM air permit and pulled their request for a water permit, which they never got, which we've learned in litigation cost them a million dollars or more to go through the process to try to get them. And they've acknowledged that they're pulling out and they filed a motion to dismiss the case because they're not coming.
All right. My next question is, and again, this gets into splitting hairs a little bit, but it's been said in public that the plaintiffs in this case have long since abandoned their request for a consent decree and that they are instead asking for a settlement agreement, which is obviously in legal terms, I guess, different than a consent decree. I couldn't possibly tell you personally what that is. Can you tell me, is that true? And what's the difference between a settlement agreement and a consent decree as it relates to binding future?
All right. Well, this, like I said, this was not a long time ago.
Yeah. February the 26th. I understand.
You know, it's not. or more to go through the process to try to get them. And they've acknowledged that they're pulling out, and they filed a motion to dismiss the case because they're not coming.
All right. My next question is, and again, this gets into splitting hairs a little bit, but it's been said in public that the plaintiffs in this case have long since abandoned their request for a consent decree, and that they are instead asking for a settlement agreement, which is obviously, in legal terms, I guess, different than a consent decree. I couldn't possibly tell you personally what that is. Can you tell me, is that true? And what's the difference between a settlement agreement and a consent decree as it relates to binding future?
All right. Well, this, like I said, this was not a long time ago.
Yeah, February the 27th, I understand.
You know, it's not. And then when they filed their, last on March 14, asking for a countywide. What, a settlement agreement is we're resolving the issues on X, Y, and Z. A consent decree binds future councils. I mean, we can file a settlement agreement today, and the next council can pick up and change the process and go forward how they see fit in the future. A consent decree is not only a settlement agreement, but it is a contract with the court, with oversight, continuing oversight.
So again, let me...
And what we've done is, is, let me read this to you. This came from the judge's order, okay? It says, "The plaintiffs' claim against the city as to zoning related to an alleged improper allowing of rendering plant operations in the I-1 light industry district. Presumably, plaintiff's counsel and the city's counsel could devise a mutually accepted language to the effect that rendering plant operations are not allowed in I-1 districts." Okay? We've done that. We filed an affidavit in court with Brian Harbison. We've played it on the record that our zoning ordinance does not allow an oil and fats rendering plant to be in an I-1. It has to be I-2. So we've agreed to that. We're on the same page, so to speak. This is such a conclusion of the plaintiffs' claim against the city would serve the same four purposes described above as to the airport authority. The basis for inclusion of that element in a consent decree has been well established in this litigation. While the plaintiffs, no doubt, would prefer a provision in the city's zoning ordinance that prohibits rendering plant operations in all of the city's zoning districts, that is not a determination this court can make. That is a legislative decision to be made, if at all, by the city itself. Of course, and this is where she started running down the lane with the consent decree, if the city chose to incorporate that determination into a proposed consent decree, it could be submitted to the court for approval as well. So what the plaintiffs remaining, what they're asking for, in order to enforce, would have to entail some sort of consent decree.
So I'm just going to try to restate that, as I understand what you just said, in layman's terms. A settlement agreement says you can't do it this time. A consent decree says you can't ever do it.
Right, until the consent decree is changed.
That's what I'm saying. So a settlement agreement just says, we're going to settle this case, and that's where it stops. If a new case, if a new project started tomorrow, we'd have to go through all this over again. But a consent decree says, not only can you not do it this time, but you can't ever do it in the future.
Right.
Okay. All right. Last question is, I've been told by a couple of people who follow this and are on top of it, that Brad Cronut, the attorney representing the city here, thought that the last offer from the plaintiffs was a reasonable one, and that he actually recommended that the city should accept that offer, and that you disagreed with him. Is that true?
Not true. Absolutely not true. Absolutely, 100% not true.
Okay. I just, again, I just wanted to give you an opportunity, because I'm not an attorney. I just...
And I'm telling you that if Mr. Cronut were here today, he would take great offense to that comment, because that would be a communication outside of attorney-client privilege, and he's a stickler for that. So whoever told you that...
It was just in the ether.
I know. Whoever came up with that, it's not true.
Okay.
And I guarantee you, if Mr. Cronut were here today, he would set the record straight.
Well, I actually tried to reach out to him directly. Would it be at all feasible to have him address this council? I'm not necessarily saying before we take action on this, but either in an executive session or...
Oh, absolutely. That's fine.
So Lee, one final point. I mean, so is there, the way I understand it, and I'm looking at this from the lens, through the lens of a taxpayer, with as well organized as the anti-rendering group was in terms of taking their position and digging in against the rendering plant and the location of a rendering plant in the county, with everything that's transpired, would they, could they, I guess probably the fairer question, could they have gotten the outcome that they wanted minus litigation, minus the expense to the taxpayer?
Absolutely. I think it's really telling that the gentleman who's funded this lawsuit never spoke to the mayor.
Well, my ultimate goal is to appease the citizens of Gadsden by saying, this is all very complex and over most of our pay grades. I just want to drive home the point that there is absolutely zero conversation going on right now at all about a rendering plant anywhere in the City of Gadsden, period.
To best of my knowledge, yes. I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
I have one more question. Go ahead.
I'm just going to add to Councilman Wilson's comment. When a company like Pilgrim's Pride wanted to come to Gadsden or Etowah County, it's based on lack of capacity in that area. There was a lack of capacity for a rendering plant in North Alabama, or really for all of the state of Alabama. The only plant is up in Hanceville, and it's over 60 years old, and so it was a business opportunity. That business opportunity window, in my opinion, and this isn't illegal talk, this is just business talk, that window has closed because Tysons has announced a $208 million rendering plant to be built in Hanceville. The one, the plant in Hanceville is already the world's largest poultry rendering plant. Now they're going to double the size and the capacity so they can easily serve the poultry needs for rendering in the state of Alabama. So from a business standpoint, there is really no opportunity anymore for anyone, pilgrims or anybody else, to come build a rendering plant anywhere in Alabama, because they were going to build a $75 million plant. Tysons is going to build a $208 million plant. So there's not an opportunity anymore. That opportunity was filled by Tyson about a week or so ago, when they announced a $208 million poultry rendering plant to be built in Hanceville. And then they're going to close that antiquated plant that they're using right now. So there's no reason for anybody to build a rendering plant anymore because of what Tysons has done. So I think it's over. I think a rendering plant coming to Gadsden or Etowah County, or any county in Alabama, has passed. There's not a demand for it. Nobody's going to spend $100 million and then not have any business come to their plant. It's simple economics, simple business.
Well, I don't know what's in Pilgrim's Pride's mind or plans. I don't know, but your analysis makes common sense.
I have one more question, I guess. So legally, the city is responsible for what the airport authority does because the mayor appointed the airport authority, and we confirmed them. So that, because I'm trying to find a way not to vote for this $400,000, because I think that $400,000 could go to better use, like we need a homeless shelter here. I can name off a lot of other stuff.
Oh, I agree with you. I agree, and it's unfortunate. It's, I mean, take a page out of Councilman Williams, you know, his question. It's unfortunate that we're having to deal with this litigation. Unfortunate. It was premature and not necessary. But it's more so than that, and I've explained this to Mr. Floyd several times. And what happened is, is we are a cosponsor for the airport. And, you know, even after the city in the prior administration went out and bought all the property around the airport, the old Pollock Farm, the Loveman Farm, all those, and the five acres from the church, you know, and then they turned around and transferred all that property to the, they created the airport authority and sent that property to them, because the airport board, under their statute, could develop a subdivision. Okay? They are, whereas a city under the Constitution is not allowed to develop a residential area. And so there's a lot of talk about this bond issue, 2004 bond issue out there. Well, the cost the city spent to buy all those farms was millions of dollars. The cost that the city fronted a corporation, a automobile supply company, to help them start up, to give them a, you know, to borrow money cheaply through us, which was paid off by them, was substantial. And then the development of this residential area, when they began the earthwork, and it was bad souls, I think you'll hear Public Works comment about the big dirt hill out there. They call it the million-dollar pile of dirt. It was, the project was already running millions of dollars, and they hadn't even just, they're doing the site work. And so when the Geith administration took office, before my time, they shut that down. And all this was, and the bond and everything was done before the Geith administration, it was done under Mayor Meen's administration. And it was shut down because it was a waste of money. And there's other reasons to. And whatever was left on, left over in that bond issue was used to pay down the principal. And like I said, I mean, it was in 2018, I explained this to Mr. Floyd out at the airport board. And I sat down and I showed him the documents, and I showed, and I explained to him how this was a separate legal entity, which the city did supply funds to. And I showed him all those records. And at that point, he understood. But it's, you know, it's unfortunate, he since has forgotten that.
I think the answer to his question is, the airport authority is not, doesn't exist because the mayor appoints. It exists because they are cosponsors with the city.
Yeah, so what's happening is...
It's not because he appointed anybody, it's because...
But we're still responsible for what they do.
Right, because we are cosponsors.
And let me, I kind of got off track, but let me go back and explain. When the federal government took that land from the city, okay, back during World War I, to use as an airport, and other parts of the city to use for training. And so after World War II, then the federal government returned these airports to the cities. And the reason is, they want the cities to keep these airports up with FAA grants. So you keep these airports running in case they're ever needed again for military purposes. That was the design way back then. And there's been some comments about the deeds that were sent back to the city had restrictions on industry and what, you can be no industry out there, whatnot. But a simple Google search of those restrictions show that Congress relieved those restrictions soon thereafter. So those restrictions are no longer applicable, and somehow that got into this case, and I don't know how it did either. But that's the whole concept, is the government wants these airports to be self-sustainable and operating in case they're ever needed again. However, they place a responsibility on the cities to help keep, to help keep those airports functioning. And so we, as a cosponsor, every time since I've been here, we've, whenever we do get an FAA grant to redo, you know, a runway or whatever, it's brought before council because we are a cosponsor. So we've always done that to make sure that the airport is financially sound, and that's an obligation that the FAA wants, has imposed on us. So yes, I mean, the way we, you know, way it was created, airport authority was created was a mechanism by which the mayor would recommend an appointment, and the council would approve it, or disapprove it. But as far as in the big picture, is the federal government wants the city to make sure it is a viable airport.
So we legally responsible? We have to pay the money? We don't have no choice? Okay. That's what I wanted to get at.
Thank you, sir. All right. Any other question?
So the last, no, the last comment is, the elephant in the room, council members, the elephant in the room is that you have a group of people who want to run the city and want to tell us what to do. That's the elephant in the room. Thank you. City clerk, I call for a vote.
I did not record a motion in second for the resolution, item number 11.
What is the pleasure of the council? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next resolution authorizes an agreement. No, this is the, the next one is the first reading. This is an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget, and this relates to the agenda item number 11, and appropriates $400,000 from unassigned funds balanced to the Gadsden Airport Authority. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week.
Can I ask a question about that one?
Yeah, that's the budget.
Yeah. I guess that's the only place we could get the money from, is the undesignated fund.
If you're eyeballing some other fund, it's got to go into the undesignated funds first before going in.
Okay.
We'll have a finance committee meeting in the future, and you can ask, write your question down, and we can ask the questions.
Well, the finance lady back there, I was going to have her to come up, but that's okay. We won't do that today.
Not at this particular time. We're not going to, we're not going to do that at this particular time. Thank you. We have any department reports?
She can come on up now.
No, we'll wait till, we'll wait till finance committee meeting, Ms. Rossa.
Just joking. Madam President, I'm just joking.
I said, we'll wait to hear from you at a finance committee meeting, so don't pay any attention to Councilwoman Worthy. At this, any department reports? We have a citizen request. Larry Sols, please limit your remarks to five minutes, give your address, city services, old-school event, and the budget.
Good morning. My name is Larry Sols. I live at 2322 Hill Avenue, Gadsden, Alabama. I'd like to, I'd like to probably apologize to the police department. That's why I asked Captain Jackson to come up here. There was something took, took part in, I got out of my character. Yes, I did. And the officer, and y'all young people need to learn this, the officer came up to me and hit me in the chest with his chin and said, I know who you are, I know you know, I know who you know. And I looked at him and laughed and calmed down. Only thing he was asking me to do is calm down. That's all he asked me to do. And that's why I brought Captain Jackson up here. This is one of my friends. Anything I call and ask him for that needs to be taken care of by the police, it's done. That's all you have to do. Ask people. They have a job just like anybody else, a judge, a lawyer. Don't take everything against the police. This is what y'all need to learn. Everybody has a job. Be respectful, and you can accomplish a lot. I really thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I want to pass these pictures around, Mr. Nielsen.
May I get into the council?
Yeah, I'll pass this one. Look at him, I'm going to explain it to you. Y'all pass this one, look at him, I'm gonna explain it to you. This is from Public Works, they cut a tree down. They come out there several times. They picked up the limb, they cut some of the tree down, they came back, picked up the limbs, come back. And the last part of it, this is what they left. I called in to Public Works to ask them whether they gonna come out there and finish. They said they'll finish the next time. Now, take in mind, this is above my house up the street. When it start raining, it comes down. Already done blow my house and the house next door curb off. People cross the street the same thing. Now, shit, I have to pick up the stuff that the city come out there and mess up? Really? What us taxpayer paying for? And I'm serious about that. Another thing I'd like to bring up, also, a public service worker asked me, told me rather, some of the things I discuss are things on a list. Now, as a citizen, I don't know everything that's on the list that the city council is discussing, cause what is that meeting called, Mr. Wilson? At nine o'clock?
Oh, the pre-council?
Pre-council meeting. Everybody don't know about that pre-council meeting. I never knew about it until Ms. Nelson sent me an email too. So I get some email every time. Now, there's things that we don't know that y'all discuss, everybody else in the city don't know. Now, it would seem like he was trying to say that, I was, when I first talked to y'all, when I first started talking to y'all, I said, I went up here for a popularity contest, and I meant what I said. I've been in the military, I believe in finishing whatever needs to be done. Don't leave it, do it, and don't pass it off on someone else. And then, I also was told by a public service worker, I get my information from the club. I don't even go to clubs. These are citizens coming up to me, whether I'm in Walmart, gas station, or wherever. Whoever district I'm in, it doesn't matter. I told y'all, I will be in everybody's district, it doesn't matter. Stuff need to be fixed or done, we need to do it. And us taxpayers want to know when it's gonna get done, and how it's gonna get done. And also, one more thing. Public service worker said something about my phones. I carry two phones. I explained it to Councilman Beck and several others. I spent $700 on this phone to take pictures from the city. Because things just need to be done. And he can call me, anyone out of you can call me or email me, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And my father was running for the district office, R.C. Sells.
I'm flabbergasted, what do I do next?
Sure.
Councilman, Councilman Wilson?
First of all, I just want to say again, welcome to everybody from Youth in Government Day. You guys got to see a little bit of the underbelly of how the city works, and it's not always pretty, but it is always productive. What you're seeing right here is democracy. I mean, these are people who disagree that come together, and that's what we're here for. You know, it's not always gonna be sunshine and roses, but everybody in this room, I think, and everybody involved in any subject that we discussed today, wants what's best for the city of Gadsden. Now, people may have different ideas about how we get there, but they all ultimately want Gadsden to be a better place. So just know that, that what you saw today was people who are passionate, who care about this city. That's on both sides of every subject that we discussed today. I'll just jump straight to the most specific one about the airport authority funding. I voted for that funding because I think that it is our obligation. We are a co-sponsor of the airport authority, and we have to pay the money if they're being sued, or ultimately, it's gonna cost us more money down the road. So I default to the city attorney and the airport authority, and I will just extend a plea to everyone involved in that case. Please, 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 do the best you can to get this over with. It has been a very enlightening thing for a lot of people in this city. It's brought a lot of people to the table that maybe have otherwise weren't involved in politics, a lot of citizens. And I think that's ultimately a good thing, I think that'll ultimately make this city a better place. But it's gut-wrenching to watch this continue to go on. And I just hope that without picking sides on either side of it, I just hope that we can all come together and get a resolution to this thing quickly, so that the city can move forward. I'm excited about the future of Gadsden, and I know a lot of other people are too. And I want to get to it, I'm ready to start living it. You know, the biggest thing for me is, it's a hard pill to swallow specifically because I do have some concerns about some reports that have been made public about the Gadsden Airport Authority. One member in particular that has said that he was threatened or intimidated by other members of the Gadsden Airport Authority because of comments he made about how their policies and procedures were taking place. That is something that's very troubling to me. As we write a check for $400,000, I just want to see resolution to that. And again, there's a legal case involved in that, and I'm sure it'll be all hashed out, and the truth will come to light. I just want to see this city move beyond this. And I think we all can hold ourselves to a higher standard and do whatever it takes on both sides to get this thing over with, so that we can move on. And just a technical matter, because I like to do this. What we did today, you guys may have noticed, there were two different actions concerning this money. One of them was a resolution that approved us granting the money to the airport authority. The second action was an ordinance where we changed the city's budget. Anytime we spend money that wasn't already approved in the budget, we have to go back and change the budget. So the first one that we did was a resolution approving, giving the Gadsden Airport Authority the money. The second one was an ordinance to actually change the city's budget to show that $400,000 being spent at the airport. So I just wanted to make clarification for those, that's what those two actions were. That's all I have.
Councilman Beck?
Thank you, Madam President, I have a few things here. Some of you may remember City Councilman Bob Echols, who had this seat for eight terms, 32 years. Bob Echols passed away about three years ago, and I'm sad to report that his wife, Betty Echols, passed away this past Sunday. The funeral service will be tomorrow at Gadsden First United Methodist Church. And for those of you that are old enough, I guess, to know, but Bob and Betty Echols left such an impression on the city of Gadsden, such a footprint, that we are forever grateful for the Echols family and for what they've done for our city and community and county, and our region for that matter. And just keep their family in your thoughts and prayers, the three daughters, as they have their mother's home-going service tomorrow. I've spoken with quite a few people about the medians on Rainbow Drive. If you'll notice, it's paved, it's striped, they've gone back and fixed a few things. And the city of Gadsden does have an arrangement, a contract with the ALDOT, state of Alabama, for us to maintain the medians. And so, the medians, as you get a little bit further down Rainbow Drive, like down by Pruitt's and that area, across from the top of the river, those are gonna get some attention pretty soon. So just thank you for your patience on that. The city did not want to go out there and start doing work, when there's still state activity going that would probably undo some of the work that we would have done. So pretty soon, we should have some real pretty green grass going there to complement the nice new pavement.
Artificial grass?
Yeah, yeah, well, I think it'll be real, real grass. I want to echo Councilman Wilson's thankfulness for our Youth in Government Day. I believe Ms. Katie, right, is our leader, thank you so much. You've done this for many years, and it's wonderful to see these bright, shiny, smart faces here in our council chambers. And I hope, trust that you all had a good morning, and I want to thank a few people. Popeyes provided biscuits, along with Jack's, and then Cothran's Bakery provided the doughnuts. It's interesting, Chris Cothran, the owner of Cothran's Bakery, participated in this very thing when he was a senior at Litchfield High School. So this Youth in Government Day, it really means a lot to him. And he's always glad to help, as are the good folks at Popeyes and Jack's when they make these donations. So just if you see him, just say thanks. And also, I want to thank Public Works for bringing the, setting the tables up and providing the water and having that for us, thank you so much. And also, the big chief, the downtown big chief, we're gonna have lunch there today. And they have been kind enough to set up there next door at 210 On the Tracks, which is a city property, and that's where we're gonna feed you guys lunch. And I'm proud to sponsor that out of my discretionary funds. So I can't wait to have a chicken finger and some other stuff with you guys. And maybe we can continue some conversations that we had. You might have some questions from today's activities. So as I said to you earlier, you're our future. Whether you come back to Gadsden one day, whether you choose to, or whether your career path might take you somewhere else, you'll become that city's future. So I hope that you'll take that to heart, that, you know, we, the things that we do, as we get older, we do for you, we do for our children and for our grandchildren. So we're grateful for y'all today, we're so proud of you and the directions in the path that you're choosing, regardless of which direction that you're choosing to go. Just know that you've got a group of people here that love and support you, and we're proud of you, and we're proud to recognize you, that you're a Gadsden city titan, and we're glad that you're here today. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, Madam President, thank you. I just, first I want to say thank you to the youth for being here, Ms. Katie Hardrick, for all you do, for our students and our superintendent back there, also, Mr. Reddick. And like I told you guys this morning, when you go off to college and get educated, I want you to think about coming back to Gadsden. We need you here in Gadsden. I know you're probably just like me, when I graduated, I said I was leaving Gadsden and wasn't ever coming back. I went in the army, but I couldn't wait to get back home. After about two or three years, I started missing home. So I came back, so I hope you all come back, and hopefully, we'll have a high-tech jobs and different things that you all are interested in. And so, thank you so much. Then I want to say to the police department, to the two officers, thank you all for trying, and I know the family appreciate it also. And like Dr. Toz was saying, our president, a lot of stuff they put on Facebook, it's not true. And I'm so, you know, sorry for some of the stuff they said on there, especially about our fire department. When I know they was out there, I went out there just about every day and seen them working hard, and several nights, they worked just about all night. So, you know, that's hard work, and it's tough. Like, you know, like I told y'all earlier, I'm a retired police officer. We didn't have the training of what to do if somebody jump off the bridge. When I had my first case on the bridge, and the guy jumped over the bridge, you know, I'm trying to take my stuff off, like I'm about to jump in, out there, and the other officer, "No, what are you doing, what are you doing?" And I said, so then we had to go down and try to help that way, go just like they did. And so, they was thinking real quick and went down, and just so happened, the boat was coming out, and I watched the video earlier this morning from the officer's camera. So I seen them, and when they got in that boat and got out there, they were standing in deep water, you know, pushing the boat out. And they took their stuff off, they vest all their heavy equipment like the captain said, and they was ready to go in, if they was able to see her again, they was gonna go in and rescue her. So that's the kind of public servants we need right there. You know, people talk about the police all the time, but we have a great police department, like the captain said. You may always have one or two bad apples, but most of our police department is very good, and our fire department also. So I want to say thank you to Chief Reed, I know I talked to you several times when I came out there, and it's just, man, it's amazing the work you all do. So thank you for finding her. So that bring not only closure to the family, but also to this city. So thank you.
Councilman Will.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'll echo the sentiment of the other council members. We're so glad to have all these bright minds here today. I so enjoy every year when we have the opportunity to speak with these young students, and today wasn't any different. So y'all, y'all continue to impress. I think our future's in bright hands. I think it was Councilman Wilson that talked about the unique challenges that y'all face with this generation. And I think that's true, I think that's very true. And anything we can do to help, you know, what I also enjoy is how all of these elected officials, no matter whether you're talking about this council or past councils, how they all really get excited to sit, to allow young people to sit at their feet and learn about our civic process. Ms. Katie, thank you so much for everything you do. I know these kids love you to death, they do. And there's no, it's not by accident that they flock to your course, to your class. We're working through the Alabama League, we're working through putting together some literature to help re-educate the public on our civic process. And the reason that we're having to do it is so many adults have slept through that class and just really have missed the opportunity to understand that process. And so, it's always good and very refreshing to see these young people kind of soaking it up and challenging it and understanding it. So definitely appreciate you guys. And I want to thank everybody that was here today that had a speaking portion of the meeting for civil discourse. It's one of the proudest things about me being an elected official in Gadsden is that we structured our meetings to the point that it allows for civil discourse. Now, you may not like all that gets said, but it's civil, but it's civil discourse, and we are intentional about blocking out disruptions. So again, thanks, thanks to everybody for the good, a good start to Youth in Government Day. And we're gonna, we're gonna go have, as Councilman Beck mentioned, we're gonna go have lunch and continue this discourse and let you guys pepper us with questions. Because I know y'all are gonna have a lot after this meeting, I'm sure. And I guess the final thing that I have to officers Burgess and Boyd, thank God for you, and thank you guys. We definitely appreciate everything you did. Thank you for not only being willing to jump into action, but thank you for being smart about how you did it. Because that's important. You know, to be emotional and reactive could have led to several more bodies being in that water, and us looking for several, multiple bodies as opposed to one. So again, I appreciate our officers, and I want to reiterate something that Officer Jackson said. We don't just have, you know, okay officers, we've got some really good ones. We've got some really good ones. And I'm not just saying that because two of my best friends in the world happen to be police officers. I'm saying it because these guys are really good. They're really good at what they do. You know, it's rare that our names in the paper regarding, you know, misactions or missteps on the part of our officers. And it's because these guys generally, you know, and as Councilman Worthy said, there's always one or two bad apples in every group. But by and large, you know, there's enough good officers on our force that they force those guys out. They're not comfortable being amongst the good ones, and I appreciate that, definitely appreciate it. So thank you.
I needed to make a correction. Mike, nothing against Public Works, but Parks and Rec supplied the water and stuff today, I think, so.
We'll take it either way.
Well, I know you needed some, but I wanted to be clear on that one thing. And also, I did, I don't want to miss a chance to thank our police department and the officers that were recognized today. And it goes without saying, what heroic efforts, and we're grateful for them. But I also want to point out that I kind of think those men and women do that every day. day. Maybe not to that extent to what we have witnessed in the past week, but 24 hours a day, we call 911, and those men and women come running with their lights on. No telling what they're gonna find when they get to where they're going. And so they're, uh, they're, they're heroes all the time, and the same goes for our fire department and our first responders. And I think in this day and age, uh, I don't know if it's television or the internet, we, we're kind of losing that respect a little bit. Uh, I understand some of it, but, you know, let's don't live in a vacuum, and, and let's see people, uh, our officers doing what they do day in and day out to help to protect our citizens. I know you guys see the SROs at, at high school every day. They're, they're probably some of your best friends. There are some good people that, that walk those halls of Gaston City High School with, uh, for the Gaston Police Department. So just thank you to the police and the fire department for what you do for us. Y'all are, uh, very much appreciated.
You know, I would dismiss this meeting.
Excuse me, but you see me putting my hand up over him, Madam President? I just got to thank a couple more people. I forgot. I'm sorry. I forgot. I'm sorry.
Council members down there, y'all, you all, you get what I was talking about?
Listen.
Go ahead.
Listen, Madam President, it wa, it wasn't just our fire department. I got to thank every fire department in this county came to assist, and we had some coming from other cities. So I want to thank them, the sheriff department also. They were there, and this Alabama State Troopers. They brought up the helicopter, they, they, they had boats in the water, so I want to thank all of them. Uh, thank you. That's all I got, Madam President. We can dismiss.
No. Chief Jaggar, you need to do like, uh, uh, Mike Hilton and get you one of those posters. You know, you seen Mike Hilton's poster? Get you one of those posters and say, I want you, so we can get some more police officers. Appreciate you, appreciate you all, and, uh, the council members that met with me, they kind of know what I'm talking about and what I was talking about. You get what I'm talking about? They, they were smiling while all of this was going on. So, uh, but I appreciate you all, and I thank you all, and-
You tell them all the men on this council talk too much. Is that what you were saying?
Those that were not there, this is the teacher's pet on this side. I call for a motion to adjourn.